I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting of Monday, July the 12th, 2021. I would ask that all please rise for the invocation by Reverend Holt's call of Missionary Methodist Church followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you in the glorious and mighty name of your son, Jesus Christ, and we do come to your throne of grace and mercy. We come asking your blessing, dear God. We ask your blessing upon us. We ask your blessing upon our city, dear God, and we thank you for it. We pray for all these that are gathered here tonight, Lord from our mayor, the city councilman, the city manager, and all, dear God, police department, fire department, all that minister and take care of our city, this place that we call home. We ask your blessing upon them, that you give them much wisdom, guidance, and grace. Your word declares if anybody lack of wisdom, let them ask of you, who give it to all men liberally. We also pray for your divine blessing and protection to be about our city, we pray. We thank you, dear God, for every church and all that's represented here, and we pray for your continual grace. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. The first item on our agenda tonight is to approve the agenda, and at this time I would like them to make an amendment to our agenda, and that would be to insert for number 13 in your agenda packets for a closed session. So I will need the council's action to approve the agenda with the amendment I just made.
Make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion in the second to accept the agenda approval as presented with amendment. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. Okay, we will go to item five, which is approval of the minutes of A, our city council meeting of June the 14th, 2021; our B, city council work session meeting of June the 29th; and C, our city council closed session meeting of June 29th. What is the direction of the council on approval of minutes?
Make a motion. We approve all of them together. The city council meeting of June 14th, city council work session of June 29th, and where we stand with the incomplete information on June 29th closed session.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. We'll now go to the mayor's comments. On June 17th, City Manager Cash and I met with officials from Caromont Health for photos and discussion of the new urgent care center to be built in Cherryville. The site for this facility is in the process of being cleared for development, and construction will begin in the near future. I was honored to attend and speak at the official ribbon cutting for International Express on June 23rd. A huge crowd was on hand, including City Manager Cash, council members Jill Puett and John Abernathy. Representative Kelly Hastings and County Commissioner Alan Fraley, and along with our city manager, also spoke at this event. A meal of chicken and barbecue was available for all present. Owner Howard Schope addressed how very appreciative he was of the city's role in helping him to locate International Express in Cherryville. Our city's Independence Day celebration was very successful, and I want to share a letter received by our city manager Jeff Cash in regards to this event, and it reads as follows: Dear Mr. Cash, I was in Cherryville on Friday, July the 2nd, for your celebration. That was my second visit for the Fourth of July, and I wanted to thank you and your town officials for a very special time. The band was just fantastic, as were the food trucks, etc. However, for me, the highlight of the evening was the awesome fireworks display. I have been to many displays over my 81 years, but none better than what your town presented. Please thank those who were responsible for the wonderful celebration. I am proud to be an American. May you have continued success in all you do. And that letter was received from, I don't know whether it's Joan or Joanne Keane of 122 Wellington Drive, Rollefordton, North Carolina. Now, just one, that's just one of the many supportive comments that I myself have received in regards to an independent celebration, and I'm sure it's been shared by our council members also. This past Friday, I was privileged to administer the welcoming speech for the official start of the Dixie Girls North Carolina State Softball Tournament. A huge crowd of over 1,000 were in attendance for this opening day. Many of our local churches hosted meals for the teams prior to this opening ceremonies. Mr. Preston Long sang our national anthem, followed by speeches from the state tournament director and special guest Rusty Strap. Dr. Vince Heavenor, First Baptist of Cherryville, announced and recognized all teams participating in this tournament. Weather permitting, the championship game is scheduled for tomorrow afternoon, or tomorrow evening, I may correct myself. We wish good luck to all the teams involved in this event. Finally, I have been asked to clarify some statements that were made in our last council work session concerning the purchase of the city's new fire truck. The city made a loan with Truist Bank in the amount of $700,000 at a rate of 1.29% for seven years. The payments will be $105,226.13 annually, beginning in 2022. The loan is prepayable in hold at any time without penalty. I would like to throw the comments in about our girls softball. I tried to go down there today to find out how the Cherryville teams were doing, and I guess the Chief Jinks can tell you that it was a mess trying to get in there. All the parking lots were full. Do we have an update?
Three of the Cherryville teams are going on to Louisiana and to South Carolina to play out of the group.
Oh, that's great. That is great then. Okay, and as far as the boys little league, the, is it 10 to 12-year-olds? They played at Myers Park Sunday at 1:00 PM. They played Lake Norman. They were defeated 11 to 3. They now play tonight at 8 o'clock, and they'll take on Wilson City. And I looked at the schedule. It's going to be hard for them to win that tournament. They got to win like six more ballgames and not lose another game. So, but we're proud of all the teams, the girls softball, and of course, the boys little league. So now we'll go to citizens to be heard, and citizen, any citizen that wishes so, that wants to speak, may do so by coming to the podium and stating their name and address before they speak. Comments will be held to five minutes per person. So at this time, do I have any citizen that would like to be heard? Again, do we have any citizen that would like to be heard? I guess not, so we will move on to item eight, and this is our special recognition of employees' years of service. And I'm not sure is Trevor Haynes here? Okay.
Don't believe so, Mayor.
The first certificate was awarded to Trevor Haynes in recognition of five years of service to the city of Cherryville. And I'm sorry he couldn't be here. We'll move to number nine is special recognition of police department employees. And at this time, I'm going to ask Officers Derek Tom and Vince Burlison if they would come forward. They both are here, okay? If you'll turn and face our audience here. Cherryville Police Department Certificate of Commendation Given the 12th Day of July 2021. Chief Cam Jinks takes pleasure in commending Patrol Officer Derek Tom and Patrol Officer Vince Burlison for providing exceptional service with compassion in the performance of their duties. Officers Tom and Burlison responded to a call involving a citizen that was having medical problems due to their medications. Both officers showed compassion and excellent service while ensuring the citizen received the correct care needed. The family of the citizen also wished to express gratitude for their compassion and willingness to go the extra mile. This is signed by Cam Jinks, our Chief of Police, and Derek Tom. Congratulations, and Vince Burlison. Congratulations to both officers. We're not done with our police department, so do we have Officer Jessica Richardson? If you'll come forward. Cherryville Police Department, Office of the Chief of Police, Exceptional Duty Award. This is to all to whom those present may come. Be it known that recognition of the attainment and exercise of the role of the professional law enforcement officer and their personal devotion and service to the people of North Carolina and the citizens of Cherryville whom they serve, the mayor of the city of Cherryville, the city manager of the city of Cherryville, and the Chief of Police of the Cherryville Police Department, does hereby acquit the honor and recognition of this occasion for service going above and beyond the call of duty, is hereby awarded to Officer Jessica Richardson for providing service with compassion along with prompt and alert actions at the scene of a house fire located at 1430 East Main Street, Cherryville, that resulted in rescuing the family's pet from the house fire on the 11th of June 2021. The testimony thereof on this date, the 12th day of July the year 2021, in the city of Cherryville, North Carolina, in the United States of America, signed by Mayor H.L. Beam, City Manager Jeff Cash, and Chief of Police Cam Jinks. Congratulations, Jessica.
Congratulations.
Okay, we're still with our police department. We've still got two awards to present, and I'm not sure both are here. Brandon Parker and Skylar Sisk. And these are the same awards. Skylar, Cherryville Police Department, Office of the Chief of Police, Meritorious Service Award, to all to whom these present may come. Be it known that in recognition of the attainment and exercise of the role of the professional law enforcement officer and their personal devotion and service to the people of North Carolina and the citizens of Cherryville whom they serve, the mayor of the city of Cherryville, the city manager of the city of Cherryville, and the Chief of Police of the Cherryville Police Department, does hereby acquit the honor and recognition of this occasion for service going above and beyond the call of duty, hereby awarded to Officer Skylar Sisk for providing prompt and alert action that resulted in locating a missing non-verbal teen after an extensive search and rescue operation on April the 28th, 2021. In testimony thereof on this day, the 12th day of July the year 2021, in the city of Cherryville, North Carolina, in the United States of America, signed by Mayor H.L. Beam, City Manager Jeff Cash, and Chief of Police Cam Jinks. Congratulations. You did a great job. I always love to recognize our own. That's great work on all of the policemen. Our next item is item 10, is Special Recognition of Finance Director Dixie Wall. And Dixie, if you will stand or come forward. You'll just stand, okay? Dixie has just been awarded the Public Power Rising Star Award, and I would like to read the criteria for the Rising Star Award. The Public Power Rising Star Award recognizes an up-and-coming leader who has less than 10 years of service experience and who in that relatively short period of time has made significant and sustained contributions to the electric utility industry and to public power specifically. A true model of leadership in action. Dixie Wall, City of Cherryville Finance Director, Utility Director, will receive the award at Hilton Head, South Carolina, at the annual Electric Cities Conference on August 17th. I don't have anything to give you other than the verbal recognition, but we're so proud of you. And Dixie was nominated by our city manager for this award, and we're so proud that she won it for our city. Congratulations, Dixie. Next item on our agenda is consideration of appointment to the Architectural Review Board. That's going to be page 15 in your agenda packets. Okay. Derek, do you want to explain what we're doing here?
That's David Days, Mayor.
Oh, is that David?
Yes.
Oh, David, okay. This is due to one of the members of the board has moved away and is not eligible to serve on the board. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so you're asking that the city approve the nomination of Stan, that should be Stan Bumgardner, to serve on the Cherryville Architectural Review Board. Donna Behringer, who's Chair of the Cherryville Main Street Program, is nominating Stan Bumgardner to fill the open position as required by the bylaws listed below. His term will begin once the nomination and vote is complete, and he will serve the remaining open seat until December the 31st, 2021, filling the now vacant seat. The vacant seat is due to a member not living in the local area as per the new bylaws. The bylaw number code is listed below, so I need action from the council to accept Stan Bumgardner onto this committee.
Make a motion to accept Stan Bumgardner onto the committee.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to accept Stan Bumgardner onto the Cherryville Architectural Review Board. Any other discussion by any council member? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. We'll go to item 12 now, which is consideration of conditional use permit for regarding 1444 West Academy Street. And everybody, I think all council members know where that is. That's down across from Ferris Fabricators. And the Planning and Zoning Director Derek Mackey's here. Does, boy, that's, that's starting on page 16 through 27 on the conditional use permit. We discussed this at work session, so is there any questions by any council member for Derek regarding this conditional use permit?
Mayor, we may have to postpone this to August of next month. Mr. He wasn't able to make it through the first meeting we had, and for that way, I postponed, posted it in the paper. The second one, which I thought would still be sufficient, Mr. Husker was telling me now that I'll need to postpone again for two little weeks. Plus, he just called, and he's trying to get her from, he's coming from Ringboro's flight, it's late. He's coming to Savannah, Georgia. So I'm asking, can I have it postponed to next month?
Okay, so that's fine. We'll just put it on there. That gives us time to post it in the papers, local papers, and that will be on August 9th at our next council meeting, not work session. Be the next council meeting. Is that correct?
Yes. Mayor, will you entertain a motion to accept that public hearing date?
Sure. I would like to entertain a motion from council that we set the public hearing for August the 9th, 2021.
Second.
Have a motion in two seconds. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, there is none. Carries, okay. Item 13 now, that was amended into our agenda, is to go into closed session regarding personnel matters.
When are you going to do other business?
Afterwards, when we come back. That would be the next item, would be other business. Okay, do I have a direction from council to go into closed session? And this would be for council and our attorney only? Is that correct?
Make a motion when we go into closed session.
Second.
Okay, we will be in closed session. 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 If. If. If.
Okay, at this time, we will consider that we are back in session for our regular city council meeting. Discussion was made in closed session concerning personnel and to be exact, our city manager and his position and his retirement, etc. And...
We did it, ma'am.
Okay, so, we discussed different options and each council member, every one of them in fact, had say-so about what they felt like and I think maybe a decision was made, but it must be made in open council session. So at this time, I'll entertain any action from council and what was discussed or...
I'll make a motion that at this time, we accept option A as presented to us by Jeff Cash. And at the end of option A, we will move into option C. So option A being stay the course until the end of this year with his retirement being January 1st, 2022. Is that correct? And then at that time, becoming our safety officer and will be reporting directly to the new fire chief and will be under his direction.
And that announcement on the fire chief would not be made until January 1st, 2022.
Right.
Is that correct?
On second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any other discussion by any council member?
I'd like to go ahead and put on record that I've called the new option that we got of extending his employment for another year. So I'm not willing to vote for this option that's on the table, not the motion right now.
Okay, alright. Have a motion in second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion of accepting option A with C being that our city manager, once his retirement comes available, will still be on our payroll as a safety officer and that is yet to be determined what those duties will be after we talk to the fire chief. Okay, all in favor of the motion, say, I will poll Councilman Parker.
Yes.
Councilman Buett.
Yes.
So it does pass by a vote of three to one if our city clerk will make those motions.
Mayor, could I have a clarification, please? In all the discussions, it was prior to tonight, because I wasn't invited in the meeting, it was that I could announce the position now, but it wouldn't take effect until January 22nd, so can you clarify that for me?
Yeah, I think that is what we said at the last work session.
There's positions to be promoted and assessment centers, testing, it's a long drawn process. So the way you said it is that it couldn't even be announced till 1/1/22.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry if it came across that way. Yeah, they did make that distinction and also that under this proposal or options, that it can be renewable at any time by council, so...
You mean that there would be guidelines? Job prescriptions?
Yeah. That we'll get the guidelines for safety officer. Okay, let's move on to the next item, which now is 14, which is other business. And, I gotta go all the way back to the start now, get back up there fast, okay. Option 14 is other business. Do I have any other business to come before council at this time?
I'd like for you, Mayor, to explain the, in our work session, we voted on an alcohol sale on Main Street. I'd like for you to explain that to the public.
That would be Derek Mackey. Is Derek still here?
Please be waiting, sir.
David, do you know exactly what that was about the alcohol sales? It can't be on the street, it has to be five or six feet from the actual road.
From the road back to the building, five feet, I believe it is. There's been two different numbers talked about, but it would be in front of there. They could have outside alcoholic sales on the street and they could have out there. And businesses would apply for the regular rolls. That's pretty much what it is.
And they could not advertise any brand of alcohol whatsoever. The only thing they could have on the cup was the name of the business that was providing the alcohol. And they could buy the alcohol without buying food. So I think that about...
Also, it wasn't just for, like the 4th of July and stuff. This is gonna be, this is gonna be all the time. Okay, I just wanted the public to know this is gonna be all the time.
Okay. Yeah, it could be on the daily routine or whatever.
And I think you need to let the public know how the vote went.
When did we vote on that?
Last, in work session.
I thought it was unanimous. You voted against it?
I voted against it. It was three to one.
You do have that in the minutes, which is open to the public. Our minutes are open, it's on our website. They want to know how any vote goes, they can look it up.
We talked about the others out on the street.
It's already voted. Okay, any other business? Do we have anything from staff? Okay, as far as I know, Chief Jinks, is that the girls over with tomorrow? Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay, so it ends tomorrow. Tell you what, they're doing a great job, they are. I went down there and they got people everywhere you look, you can't get in there. And the only parking space I found was down at Little League Field in a handicap, so... They got a lot of volunteers working on that. And I think, actually, the Little League goes on, I think it's another four days before it's over with.
Mayor, may I ask something? We launched the new city website, it's still cityofcheerable.com. It's brand new and we've got all the stuff that we were talking about in there that separates it by businesses. You can look up restaurants, it has every restaurant in Cheerable, it has every business in Cheerable, that has everything separated that's been launched, there's all new pages for everybody. So if you get a chance, pull the website up and go through it, you'll see why we're going to do pictures now. But be able to look at that. And we've already had over 935 hits on the website and I've not even made it public yet. Just by sending it out and letting people see. And then our digital marketing from that picked up, we had 94,000 different people look at our ad last month. And 257 actually clicked on the ad and came to our website and stayed there more than two minutes and looked at us.
Now what magazine is that in?
It's not, it's a digital company that we're using, Charle. And they're using our Facebook ads and our Facebook and our City of Cheerable ads are all linked together now. So it's a much broader, we're really broadcasting to five surrounding counties is what we're targeting by now.
Okay. Okay, anything else from council at this time?
I've been walking in the mornings this month and there's some places where the sidewalk is really in bad shape. I don't know what the, do we have money in the budget for, there's one on Academy Street where somebody did a sewer line repair and it's just pieces of concrete laying there in mud.
We have power bill money, Mr. Freeman and Brandon will take a look into, just mention to him what area he's discussing. We'll see if we can get it on the list.
Somebody broke the sidewalk up when they did a sewer repair. And it's on, I don't have the address, it's on Academy Street heading west on the left side. And then, you know, Elm Street, up there towards the end on the northwest end, in bad shape. Broken all that. They did. So you're not liable to repair that?
He is, I spoke with him three times so far, I'll get back to you. He's supposed to already have that repaired.
Okay, I don't know if this is the time or not, but I did get an email from our city manager. Are we applying for C MAC? Okay, I saw the permit and I just wondered where we were gonna go that far as to put a C MAC program in.
We have had an engineering firm wanting to encourage us to apply.
Okay, and where would that be? I mean, what was they talking about?
The sewer outfall. Larry's, the ones give us so much problems. But we're hoping that bond money and/or ARP money will help with that.
Oh, okay.
And the C MAC money puts way too many...
Because I didn't know if we should be, me and Jill should be talking to them at MPO about, because I know Bessemer City did a C MAC program and then Mount Hollystorm one. You have to, it's very expensive what you have to put up. There's money there.
It's too much red tape and too many requirements.
Yeah, you have to put up, it's a large percentage of the money has to come from you.
Brandon can tell you his experience with the sidewalk brands.
Yeah, okay.
They don't do a whole lot of them. We go in-house with MPO first time since COVID, on July 22nd, so...
Yes, ma'am, there's so much red tape, that's part of the money and so hard and the requirements are just very stringent just to get a little bit of money.
Okay, I saw where they did it in Dallas too, from 321 to up to the grocery store Ingles.
Yes, the last one we did was down around Chavis.
Yeah, and that's not been that long ago, what? About eight years ago?
It's been a while since we've done that.
Okay, alright. Any other business to come before council? Staff or council? Not, do I have a motion to entertain that we adjourn?
Second.
Motion is second for adjournment. All in favor, aye. All opposed, we are adjourned.
Who's that?
Ron Goddard.
We're getting paid like that tomorrow.